Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Warrenville City Council Meeting Number One for May 6, 2019. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bevire.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener is excused. Alderman Wilson. Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are we on?
Yeah.
All right. We have five proclamations this evening. I want you to get comfortable because we are about to set a new record. The previous record for the number of whereas's in one evening was 27. Thirty-one tonight, folks. So get comfy. They're great proclamations, and part of a good proclamation is whereas's. We can't avoid it. So the first one is for Building Safety Month, May 2019, and Dale Ingerbretson is coming up from our Building Department to accept this proclamation. Welcome, Dale.
Thank you.
Building Safety Month, May 2019. Whereas, if you're keeping count, that's the first. "The city of Warrenville, Illinois continues efforts to address the issues of safety and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens and gives us confidence that our structures are safe and sound; and whereas our confidence is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials who work to ensure the safe construction of buildings; and whereas these officials use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement codes to protect people in the buildings we occupy; and whereas the international codes are used by Warrenville to protect the public from natural disasters; and whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our code officials and inspectors who assure us of safe and livable buildings; and whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by our building and fire prevention officials in protecting lives and property." Now therefore, I, David O'Bremmell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with the community in recognizing Building Safety Month and our excellent officials. Dale?
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to say something?
Sure. Go ahead. Mayor, thank you, and I also thank the City Council for your support in our department, our work that we do every day to protect the community. It's an exciting year. You know, say, timing is everything, and in this case, it is the case very much because we had the new codes that we adopted a few years ago, and with all the construction going on, it's a little bit higher density housing, and I'm very much confident that those buildings are going to stand the test of time, and we're not going to have any safety issues with them. They're probably going to be better than some of the other housing that's already here, and I hate to say that to people that already live in town, but like I say, I'm very confident that this is going to be a great product. Also, I'll just do a plug-in here, too, for the department. We've been working very diligently to make building permits a lot easier to obtain, and in fact, over the weekend, I think we received two on Sunday and another one or two on Saturday. So it's easy to get to 24/7. It's Warrenville's website, warrenville-il.us backslash e-permit, and it'll get you right there, and it's an easy-to-fill-out form. We've cleaned it up real nice, works great, a lot of positive feedback on it, so encourage you to get permits. They protect the value of your home. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Thanks for coming. And our Assistant Public Works Director, Phil Kukler, will take the next proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is May 19 through the 25th, 2019. "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of people; and whereas public work services are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives; and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees, and who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures, and facilities essential for our citizens; and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens of Warrenville to understand the importance of public works and public works programs; and whereas May 19 through the 25th marks National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore, I, David O'Bremmell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do hereby proclaim May 19 through the 25th, 2019, as National Public Works Week in the City of Warrenville, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the challenges involved in providing public work services, and to recognize the contributions of public work employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." Phil, thank you so much.
Thank you. And David O'Bremmell. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for your support of Public Works. We've got a lot of great people working in the department, and we appreciate the support you guys give us in terms of giving us the tools we need to perform our jobs. I do want to make a plug for the Public Works Open House. It'll be our second annual one. It's going to be Thursday, May 23rd, at the Public Works facility. It'll be from, I believe, like 3:00 to 6:00-ish. I don't know the exact times. We do have a flyer that's going to be distributed to the various schools, and we've got it posted on the website and on Facebook, I believe, as well. And it was a fun event last year. We had a good turnout. If you want to get a couple of hot dogs and some chips, take a look at some of the equipment we have, and that, it was a fun time, and the kids that showed up had a great time. I remember our senior civil engineers, children had a great time honking the horns in some of the big trucks and that kind of stuff multiple times. So it was a great time, and thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And Chief Toronto, could you join me, please, for a couple of proclamations? The first one is for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, specifically citing DUCOM, which is our 911 provider for the City of Warrenville. "Whereas DuPage Public Safety Communications, known as DUCOM, plays a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community; and whereas DUCOM has been successfully serving the public safety communication needs of the City of Warrenville and surrounding communities since 1989; and whereas while enduring long shifts and handling frequent life and death emergencies, DUCOM telecommunicators set high standards in performing their duties in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner; and whereas DUCOM telecommunicators provide a critical communication link between the residents and police, fire, and emergency medical service providers; and whereas these individuals efficiently coordinate emergency services to ensure the health and safety of our residents, visitors, and travelers in our cities, towns, villages, districts, and on our highways 24 hours a day, 7 days a week; and whereas our public safety communications personnel daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services, now therefore, I, David O'Bremmell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim the week of April 14 through the 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Warrenville, and I commend the devotion, contributions, and services of DUCOM telecommunicators." Chief?
Thank you, Mayor.
Want to say a little something about that?
Sure. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. Just a couple of things with DUCOM. My son's a DUCOM dispatcher, and the complexity of their job is really amazing, the amount of technological knowledge that you have to have. If you go out there, it almost looks like something you would think at Mission Control from a launch center. But something that may be of interest to the folks here, in case you didn't know, there's a great program we have. It's free of charge. It's offered through DUCOM. It's called Smart 911. And what it is, you go there free of charge, and you register as a user. When you dial 911 after you're a Smart 911-registered user, if there's any information that would come up that you would need, first responders would feel would be pertinent, such as somebody that has a health condition, an allergic reaction to a medication, if you have pets in the house, the types of vehicles you drive in case you go on vacation, so that they know when the police are dispatched there, that if they see things that are out of place, this is information provided by you. You can upload a picture. You can indicate if there's kids in the house and where their bedrooms would be in the house. So if, God forbid, there was a fire, the fire department would know when they get there what rooms to try and get to first. So if you go to either DUCOM, D-U-C-O-M-M.org, or our webpage, you can get a link where you can register for Smart 911. So beyond, on behalf of our telecommunicators and their friendly voice in the middle of the night at the other end of the radio, I know that they appreciate this, and thank you very much.
Just an addendum to what the chief said. I've had the privilege of being the chairman of the Board of DUCOM for the last 12 years, hence the DUCOM tag on my lapel. If you saw the complexity, as you say, it looks like some sort of a space center where these folks sit at a desk, and there's just all kinds of screens, and they take a call. I've watched them take a call. It's incredibly sophisticated what they do, and they do it just like that. They're so well-trained. So we have a lot to be proud of in DuPage County because we set a very high standard for 911 service. In fact, DUCOM, after 41 years since their inception, finally built a new center on that DuPage County campus, a $16 million state-of-the-art 911 center. So if you ever get the opportunity to take a tour, or if you'd like a tour, let me know, and I can get you in. I know somebody there. It is remarkable what the work they do and the investment the community's made to make sure that we're able to do that. By the way, DUCOM is a governmental entity in itself. It's a governmental cooperative. It's a perfect example of how government can cooperate to do something that the individual governments couldn't do by themselves. Dispatch is very difficult to do. It's very expensive to train the people. The equipment is very expensive. So a bunch of communities got together 41 years ago and formed DUCOM as a cooperative in order to be able to do that service better and more effectively and cheaper. And in 41 years, we serve now 44 police and fire departments in DuPage County, a million people. So it's pretty exciting to recognize the quality of the service that we get from our telecommunicators. So Chief, thanks for accepting that. Our next proclamation is National Police Week, May 12 through the 18th, 2019, to recognize National Police Week 2019 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. "Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Warrenville Police Department; and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty; and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC; and whereas 228 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 159 officers killed in 2018 and 69 officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all the officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2019; and whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12 through the 18th; and whereas May 15 is dedicated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Warrenville formally designates May 12 through the 18th, 2019, as Police Week in Warrenville, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation." Chief?
Mayor, Council, thank you again for all the years I've been here, the support that you've given the police department on our officers. It's really nice to work in a community where you're able to engage with the citizens. You drive down the street, you wave at them, and they wave at you, and you get a whole hand and not just one finger. That doesn't always happen in every community, but it does here. And we've tried to expand our footprint more and more to have more community engagement in the programs that we do, and I'm especially proud of and privileged to be able to lead such a fine group of officers. They're really a great crew, and they go out there every day and try to do their best for you. So thank you again, all of you, for your support. Thank you.
It is gratifying. Every once in a while, there's an organization that does some research on the safest communities in Illinois, and every single time, we are listed among the very safest. I think the last one listed us as among the top 50 safest communities in a state of 2,000-some communities. So our folks do a terrific job. I like to tell the story of the bank robbery that we had a couple of years ago in Warrenville, West Suburban Bank up on Route 59. Some young fellow decided that he was going to rob that bank. How long do you think before we had him in custody here in Warrenville? You'll never guess. Four minutes after he left the bank. He was driving through Warrenville. He came to the intersection of Batavian Butterfield Road. He stopped. One of our officers was facing him, heard on the radio the description of the car, said to himself, "That looks like the car." There was no license plate on the front. Pulled him over, and guess what? That was the guy. Four minutes. But that's an example of how well-trained our people are, and the quality of the recruits that we get every year gets better and better, and I give all that credit to Chief Toronto, who's done just a terrific job in making our department one of the best in the state. Chief, thank you so much. This proclamation honors the 50th anniversary of Municipal Clerks Week, May 5 through the 11th, 2019, and Emily has said that she's going to stay our municipal clerk for the foreseeable... No?
No.
All right. Well, I thought I'd try. I thought maybe I could shamer into saying yes.
No, no. Two more years.
Okay.
On the record.
Oh, I gave her the opening, didn't I? Okay, whereas. I'll use up my last whereas's on you just for that, all right?
No, I think I have one more next year.
Okay, good. That's right.
That's right.
I'll save some.
Okay.
"Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world; and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants; and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels; and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all; and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community; whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations; and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of municipal clerk," and we have an assistant in Josie right here. Thank you, Josie. "Now therefore, I, David O'Bremmell, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, do recognize the week of May 5 through the 11th, 2019, as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Emily J. Larson, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they serve." And that is a perfect description of you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do accept this on behalf of Josie, who does 90% of the work, and the rest of the staff at City Hall with community development and finance and administration. Couldn't do it alone. There's no I in team, and we definitely have the best team. I appreciate all their help. Thank you.
And lastly, before we get down to business, we like to invite new people in. Sometimes we have to say goodbye to folks that have served us for a while. That's the case this evening. Alderman Hoffman is retiring. Alderman, please join me up here for a certificate of appreciation and a moment of thanks from the community. And a key to the City of Warrenville. Yeah. Well, look at that, oohs and ahs. Okay, this is, again, a certificate of appreciation, Michael Hoffman, for serving on the City of Warrenville City Council and representing Ward III from May 4, 2015 through May 6, 2019. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for your service. Would you like to say a few things?
I'd just like to say thank you for the honor and the privilege of serving you, and I certainly hope I contribute something, and I want to congratulate the new Alderman, Jeff Crystal. I'm sure you'll do a great job. Thank you.
Okay, on with the business of the meeting, starting with citizens' comments. If you've watched before, you know that we do this at every council meeting. We have time for citizens to say their piece. Tonight, we have two people signed up, Vivian Lund, first, and Bob Seibert, second.
Hi. I, well, I live at 3S 532 Hale Street in Warrenville. And when I was mayor in 19... Well, I started in '85, but in 1987, I went to a mayor's meeting at the Doubletree Hotel on Butterfield Road in Downers Grove. And when I came out of the meeting, there was a landscape company that was pulling up the tulips and putting them in a dumpster, and the bulbs, the tulips and the bulbs were attached. And I said, "Are you going to throw those away?" And he said, "Yes." And I said, "Well, may I take them?" He said, "Lady, take as many as you like." And I had my little red Escort, and I filled the backseat and the trunk and the seat next to me, and I brought them home, and I planted them in all the parks. The only ones that have survived rebuilding are the ones that you see in the triangle as you leave here, and they have been there since 1987 and have come back every year, and they're there again this year. And I was sure, when they put in that new electric service, that that was going to be the end of them, but it wasn't. So I appreciate, I think the public works probably worked really hard to work around those tulip bulbs. The other thing I would like to comment on is how proud I am of our city and of all of the officials that serve in these very important positions, and all of the excellent staff that we have in the city, and to all of the citizens who appreciate your work, all of you. I hear so many good things about you. And then when I read another mayor's comments from another city and says, "Oh, we're in good shape. We only have $25 million in debt, and we, you know, we're getting a lot of whatever." And then I can think, "Well, we don't have any debt, and we have probably $25 million in reserve." So I'm just really proud of the work that you've all done, and it was, it's a real legacy, positive legacy, that you're all leaving on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian.
How many people would expect an 80-year-old house that hasn't been repainted in 10 years and hasn't been touched on any remodeling in over 25 years to be paying over $900 in TIF III payments? According to the economics of the statute, this is not supposed to happen. But if we look at the recent bill that came out, it shows that it is happening. It shows that the annual tax rate increased by $131, whereas the TIF increased by over Yet there's no building. There's no physical improvement. The yearly increase in TIF was 75%. 75% increase. If we asked my granddaughter, who is in economics, a senior at Wheaton-Warnville South, she would say, "You're in economic problems because you're taking away more each year in the TIF than you're adding to the revenue." How can that occur? How can we continue to take more away and not have any increase? The only one that can do that, as we know, is the state of Illinois. So what this occurs is basically the tax rate is forced to increase on everyone. There's no alternative. This is what occurs. So what we have is, through the TIF, we're having increases on individuals, this is a senior, on individuals in the whole community who shouldn't be having increases under property There's also a vacant parcel of land, no development. Vacant parcel of land. Taxes increase by $22.52 from 2017 to 2018. TIF increases by $45.18, almost more than double. So what we're doing is, who gets... So what we're doing is, who gets the TIF money? The city. Who pays the TIF money? The taxpayers. The problem is, there is a unique problem with the TIF statute that should be changed. Four years ago, Dan Cronin called a meeting, invited City of Warrenville, invited me. I was there at 9:00 in the morning on a Thursday. Chairman says, "City's not coming." He says, "You're correct. We're not going to do anything." And I said, "Then why are you the chairman of DuPage County when the citizens who elected you are being harmed and we're getting no leadership?" I'd like to, this time, thank Michael Hoffman for his four years of service. I'd just like to say that Michael Hoffman led the parade, not for himself, but for his fellow citizens, and I thank him.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments now, beginning with the mayor. Several things this evening. First of all, on May 17th, it'd be a police cop on a rooftop for Special Olympics Illinois again this year. We do this every year up at Dunkin' Donuts on 59. It's a nice opportunity to visit with the officers a little bit and contribute to that fine effort for the Special Olympics. So that's on May 17th. It starts at 5:00 AM, goes to 12:00 noon. I won't be there at 5:00 AM, so if you want to start out early, go ahead. Show up a little later, yes?
It's both Dunkin' Donuts this year.
Oh, both?
Yes.
I forgot. We're a dual Dunkin' Donut city now.
Revolve.
Okay, that's progress. Both Dunkin' Donuts. Officers will be available from 5 till noon. Okay? And Chief, you have something else from the department also to add in there?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody who came out yesterday for our recycling shredding event. We had 275 cars that came through, recycled lots of material, so it's always a worthwhile thing. The other thing, and I'm going to do everybody a favor here and block my face, is that if you are interested in having one of these in your yard, if you stop by the Police Department and you can pick one up, we had our first run of them delivered, and they're at the Police Department right now. But we hope that if our citizens would take these, post them in your front yards where they'd be visible for traffic. This is one of the biggest complaints that we get, is people speeding on the side streets and the dangers that they pose to kids. So we thought this would be a nice attempt to try and get the word out, and hopefully we'll get lots of these displayed throughout the city.
Thanks, Chief. On the 18th, the day after the 17th, is the annual bike rodeo put on by the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Lots of fun. Kids come and get their certificates. They can have their bikes checked. They get helmets if they don't have them. They're fitted. We give away about a dozen brand-new bikes. So the whole time that this thing is going on, kids are going home with brand-new bikes. It's a lot of fun. So if you've got kids, bring them up to the bike rodeo. Oh, and they get their picture taken with the mayor, if you can imagine that. Some people think that's neat. I do. It's kind of fun. So Bike Rodeo, 9 to 12, right across from City Hall at the gazebo on May 18th. Today is the first day of the Mayor's Fitness Challenge in Warrenville. Easy to sign up for. All you have to do is go to the City of Warrenville, go to government, go to mayor, go to Fitness Challenge, answer a few questions, and you're in. It's a friendly way to have a little competition with me. I put my activity minutes in every day. You put yours in. You can keep track. We can have a little competition that way. It's a way to encourage you to have more activity in your life. It goes on for 12 weeks. You get to choose the activity. Doesn't have to be running, doesn't have to be biking. It could be gardening, it could be cutting the grass, it could be walking, it could be anything that you consider to be a little bit more than you normally do. But the idea is to get to be more active for at least 12 weeks, and hopefully it'll carry on after that. At the end of 12 weeks, if you get 1,800 minutes in, you get a really cool t-shirt. So, I mean, what else could you ask for? Designed by a local graphic artist who's very talented. So a different t-shirt every year. Earn it, have some fun, and wear it proudly. Also, under the Economic Development banner, most of you are aware that the Navistar Building in Canteras has been empty for quite some time. That's over with. It has been leased to Edward Elmer's Healthcare. They're bringing approximately 1,000 new employees to Canteras every day. That daytime population, of course, is extremely important for the economic vitality of our town, so we're pretty excited about that. It's set empty for a number of years. They've leased almost four floors out of the five floors, roughly. So it's going to be a big operation. They're consolidating a lot of smaller operations in Warrenville. It's certainly an honor for our community to have that happen, and the economic ramifications are a huge plus to finally have that building full. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Treasurer?
No report.
I think they want to get on with things. Administrator?
I have nothing yet tonight, thank you.
And Attorney?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank those who came up to our local government seminar last Thursday on May 2nd in Highland Park at the Ravinia Festival. Four folks from the city came up, and I think they had a good time. We had a good time, and we look forward to seeing more of you next time.
Thank you, Barb. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda One for the May 6, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. Discussion, Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I'd like to remove Item 6C for a couple of questions.
Six, I'm sorry?
C.
Okay, we have now, the agenda has been amended. Motioner and second agree to that amendment?
Agreed.
Okay. Any other discussion of the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved as amended. We have a couple of sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 15, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting, and approve the minutes of the March 18, 2019 City Council Closed Sessions One and Two.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion of those minutes? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, except staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-18, approving an agreement between the City of Warrenville and Compass Minerals America Incorporated for the purchase of bulk rock salt. B, except staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-19, awarding the contract for the 2019 road program to Geneva Construction Company of Aurora, Illinois, in the amount D, except Mayor Bremmell's recommendation and approve the appointment of Julie Lynn to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for the remainder of the term set to expire April 30, 2020. E, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting held on February 26, 2019. F, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting held on March 27, 2019. G, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on April 18, 2019. H, receive and file report of invoices paid up to May 1, 2019, in the amount of $562,379.43. I authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before May 20, 2019, in the amount of $240,756.35. Alderman Wilson?
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda as reported.
Second. Motion and a second. My ever-overall call, please. Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll return to Item 6C. Alderman Goodman, did you wish to make that motion, or, okay?
I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendation and pass resolution R2019-20, approving a contract with Engineering Resource Associates Incorporated for construction engineering services for the 2019 road program in the amount of $67,438.46 plus reimbursable expenses.
Second. Second by Alderman Berry. Discussion, Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions I think probably fulfilled. My first question has to do with the proposal document from the contractor. They refer to this as the Emerald Green subdivision road program, and there isn't any reference anywhere in their proposal that I could see to the bits of the road program which aren't in the Emerald Green subdivision. It's not a lot, but there are some. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear with the contractor, that other parts of the road program are included.
Yes, there's, yeah, there were that. They did the design engineering assistance, the design engineering in the bid documents together, so there were. They're definitely aware of the other components. There really isn't much outside there, as you mentioned. It's, there's a little bit of work up here on Stafford Place, and then the citywide patching that, which is generally handled by public work staff.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And then, secondly, in the memo, it refers to the fact that the reason we chose this contractor is partly because of positive experiences on previous projects with the resident engineer who will be assigned to this project. So it concerned me a little bit that in the contract, it refers to Exhibit A, which is the key personnel who are going to be assigned to the project, and Exhibit A is So we probably need to fill that in.
Correct. Right, yeah, they're assigning a gentleman named Andy Johnson to the project. I know who that is. I don't know why that's not in there to make sure. But I do know the staff that they're assigning to the project. I'm not actually sure they mention that anywhere in their proposal documents.
Okay, well, can we get that? Does that need to be amended before we approve it? Can we approve it and then amend it afterwards without any difficulty? It's in Section 4A on page three of the agreement. It says, "Key project personnel, the key project personnel identified in Exhibit A shall be primarily responsible for carrying out the services, et cetera, et cetera." But then if you turn to the back of the contract, Exhibit A is blank.
City Attorney?
And the issue is that the proposal, which is Exhibit A, does not specifically call out the individuals?
No, it doesn't.
And we know, but we know who they are?
Yeah, there's one gentleman named Andy Johnson. If you wanted to prove it with naming him as the person, the ERA's personnel that's going to be on site working on the project, that's, that's fine.
Well, if the mover and second are accept adding that gentleman to Exhibit A, then I think you can, you can proceed.
Sure. I would agree to that amendment.
Okay, we have agreement with both folks. Very good. Good catch.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to the item that we have for the regular agenda. May I have a motion, please? Alderman Goodman?
I move to accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O 2019-20, is, yeah, authorizing the issuance of a quick start foundation-only building permit for the Riverview West apartment building at 28,000 Ferry Road.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Perhaps some introductory remarks by our community and economic development director, Ron Metzer. Ron?
Thank you. You may recall that last fall, the City Council received a request from the owner and developer of the Riverview West project in Canteras Sub area C for a quick start permit that would, that allowed them to begin the massive amount of earthwork that would be required or is required on that particular piece of property to accommodate the project that they've received preliminary planned unit development approval for from the City Council last year. Even though it's been a rough winter and somewhat of a wet spring, they're now at a point where they're nearing completion of all the grading work that was authorized under that initial quick start permit. We are, as a city, in the final stages of the review, and likely will be presenting a recommendation to the Plan Commission at this coming Thursday's meeting on the final PUD plans for the project. That would be a conditional recommendation of approval. So it's likely that it's still another month to six weeks out before they would get their final PUD approval from the City Council and satisfy all the necessary conditions that would normally allow staff to administratively issue building permits for the project. With that knowledge, the developer has submitted a request for your consideration that would allow them to obtain a second quick start approval permit from the City Council, authorization, I should say, under which the city staff would be authorized to allow them to begin foundation work on the apartment component of the project while they finalize the final PUD review and approval process. That city staff has reviewed that in detail, and we are recommending approval of it based on five key conclusions and findings. First and foremost is that the city has a proven track record of using the quick start foundation process in Canteras historically to facilitate the timely implementation of many of the large projects that now exist in that project, and really no downside or any negative ramifications from the city in any of those prior experiences. Secondly, the final PUD plans that we've been working with the developer to finalize for the project are substantially consistent with the preliminary PUD plans that were presented to and approved by the City Council last year. Thirdly, we think it's in the city's best interest collectively to work with the developer, allow the foundation work to begin at their own risk, which would help facilitate an expedited or a timely completion of the project. The sooner the project is completed, the less impacts there will be from a construction standpoint on the surrounding property owners, the sooner that the new residents could be occupying the building, and the sooner the project could become an amenity for the overall Canteras project. We also believe it's important to recognize that accommodating, encouraging this type of high-quality, multifamily development is consistent with a couple of key objectives contained in the city's 2015 economic development plan, so it's very much consistent with that planning policy document that the City Council approved. And then finally, last but not least, as this quick start recommendation is structured and working with the city attorney, one of the special obligations that the developer would have in order to take advantage of it is that they would be required to post a cash bond with the City of Warrenville, equivalent to 125% of the costs that would be incurred if they decided to, they built the foundation, then they decided not to move forward with the project for whatever reason, either didn't receive final approvals from the city or for some other reason, private reason, they decided not to move forward. The city would have a cash bond available in the city's accounts that could be drawn on to remove the top part of the foundation to below grade and have that entire area restored with grass to a park-like setting, is the way the ordinance reads. So with those conclusions, we think it's in the city's best interest, and we're recommending that the City Council approve this. There are a variety of representatives of the developer here tonight, if there's any specific questions that the City Council might have of the developer.
Thank you, Ron. Alderman Ashauer?
No timeline on when something might be available for occupancy?
John Shease is a representative for the developer. The timeline from now to occupancy is about 18 months, is our estimate.
Thank you. I do have one other question for staff. The, how our capacity requirements for the city of Naperville are proceeding, and whether there's going to be sewer capacity available for this project?
It's an extremely good question. It's an extremely good question. We have been working for the last year with the city of Naperville to deal with sanitary sewage capacity issues. The city does have an intergovernmental agreement that dates back a couple of decades with the city of Naperville, and under that agreement, there is a capacity allocation for future development in Cantera, which would be more than enough to satisfy the needs of this particular project and the other project that's, similar project that's proposed down by the theater. We're waiting for some final costs of that capacity. It's a relatively complicated formula that changes every year, that really defines how much it's going to cost to purchase that capacity, but we have a right to purchase it, and Naperville has allocated that capacity to us. It's just a matter of finalizing the final cost of purchasing of it, which cost will be borne by the developer.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I just want to say I'll be voting no on this for one simple reason, is I was against this project originally, for one, for the reason of being, we're taking commercial property, and that property was originally intended for commercial development. And every time we take commercial property and change it to residential, we're reducing our ability to lower our taxes. So I'll be voting no on this, thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I think this question's for the city attorney. We've issued Quick Start approval before for foundation-only permits. This would be another such use of that power. Do you feel that the Warrenville subdivision control ordinance, which doesn't specifically reference the foundation, building foundation work, needs to be amended?
We just, Mr. Metzer and I did discuss the question of what's in the code, and the code talks about grading and utility-type work. It does not specifically talk about foundational work, but this is an ordinance that is on parity with the subdivision control ordinance itself, and so the council can supplement those regulations by the adoption of this ordinance.
So that would be fine for this project, but then going forward, would it make sense to change the code to make that clear?
I think that's a policy decision the council can consider if you'd like to make it facilitate that. It's certainly something that you can talk about, the pros and cons of that, and we can amend the code accordingly.
Just to clean it up at some future time when we're considering other code adoptions?
Correct.
Okay, well, maybe that's something for the staff to consider, any future cleanup of the ordinances. Thank you.
We will do that.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
No.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gentlemen, get to work. We will move on, and thank you for coming to Warrenville. We're excited about the project. We, community development director and myself, visited the project recently completed in Oakbrook by this group, by Interform, and it was first-class. Very, very nicely done, so this is going to be a nice addition to the community. We have nothing under unfinished business, no new business, no closed session. I just need a motion to adjourn, seen die. Alderman Goodman?
I move to adjourn, seen die.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Don't leave. Give us a few minutes to switch the tapes or whatever technical thing we do these days, and we'll be ready for City Council Meeting Number Two, the one you've been waiting for.